Good morning. I'd like to call to order the board of supervisors here for October 22nd. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair.
Yes, Chair. Let the record reflect, all supervisors are present in the board chambers today, except for Supervisor Askew, that is absent today, and Supervisor Lejo joining us shortly.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections for closed session?
No additions or corrections, Chair.
Thank you. And so we'll call for closed session items 1A through 1D. Do we have any public comment on these matters? Public comment?
Yes, we have one person through Zoom, Chris Snyder.
Please go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yes, you can.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I emailed over an invoice this morning from Mark A. Wasser that I received about two months ago. I have to say that, you know, Ms. Blitch, you have done quite a number on my life. And I don't know if you realize, no, I think you do. I think at this point you actually do realize the harm that you have caused me and other public employees and their families. And it is unforgivable. You have a legal obligation. Now I'm speaking to the board. Under Government Code 815.6, you have a duty to protect individuals' rights. You can't ignore this, but you have. And all during this, Ms. Blitch has given herself, or I guess the board has given her, a 40% raise over the last couple of years. That's not including her last promotion. I want you all to really read that invoice because violating my rights is literally line items in there. Burying complaints, violating rights to CPRA requests, violating election law are line items. And the board should have known about this. And Ms. Blitch, when I reported to you that I was being threatened and then you gaslit me by making it seem like I was crazy?
Thank you for your comments.
No, I'm not done.
The two minutes are up. I can't allow any further, I'm sorry. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you all. Closed public comment then, and moves to closed session.
Good morning. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors here for today. May we have the rule call, please?
Yes, Chair. Let the record reflect all supervisors present in the board chambers today, except for Supervisor Askew that is absent today.
May we have the Spanish interpreter services, online? Is that on a day? Please.
Muy buenos días. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Soy intérprete en español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario público y necesita servicio intérprete, por favor de hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle y por favor de no interrumpir mientras le estoy interpretando. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Diego. And we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Leyu, which can lead us? Do we have any additions or corrections?
Yes, we do. Correction to item number 43 under consent agenda, general government. Correction to item number forty-three under consent agenda, general government revised for report. Was received.
Thank you. And we have quite a few ceremonial resolutions here. Numbers two through nineteen, is there any public comment on the resolutions themselves?
We do have one hand raised on Zoom, number ending one eight zero five.
One eight zero five, this is for the resolutions, okay, you would have two minutes. If you want to comment on one of the resolutions, yes.
Yes, please, thank you. My name is Brian Rosen, as you probably know by now. And there's a lot of resolutions honoring veterans and the police. And I think a lot of veterans have always been very brave going back to the, when the country was founded, even when we were having our big Indian wars for twenty-eight years or so, when so many Indians were killed. And there were a lot of brave veterans back then who were protecting the settlers and, you know, but they also, the military had did terrible, terrible things back in the day as well. And I don't blame the veterans one little bit for the terrible things that are done now by our US military veterans, or soldiers, or back then, it's politicians who are the real criminals, who are responsible for all the terrible things that our government has, is doing and has done since the beginning of our country. I would just like to say, I think, given the genocide of the civilian population, so many women and children, people, doctors, hospitals, UN aid centers, I wonder if this is really the appropriate time. Why don't we, why don't we commend the peace activists, you know, blessed are the peacemakers, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven, those who not only spread peace, but those who are for peace also do a great duty to the world. And I would just like to suggest that you do that. And remember, we don't take care of the veterans, we just celebrate them. Going back to the, you know, Johnny comes marching home again, hurrah, hurrah, we love to celebrate them, but they get treated horribly, and the politicians always celebrated them. So please, speak out against the genocide, do a resolution against the genocide of the Palestinians. It's only inflaming the situation, okay, thank you.
Do we have any other commenters on the resolutions?
Yes, we do, phone number ending seven oh five.
Yes, you have two minutes. You have two minutes, seven oh five. Last, there you go, you have two minutes, yes, on resolutions.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly fine.
Thank you, yeah, good morning supervisors. The extermination of the Palestinian people by Netanyahu is unacceptable. It's Nazi Germany all over again.
This is not a resolution that we have before us today, this is on resolutions.
Is this public comment, I'm sorry, is this public comment?
This is comment on resolutions, we'll get to public comment in a few minutes, thank you. Do we have anybody else?
No.
Thank you, okay, then we have items two through nineteen are resolutions.
I'll second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. We are going to, see, we have two, three to present today, but first one we're going to go is move up is Resolution nineteen. This is adopt a resolution appreciation of California State Senator Ana Caballero for her outstanding representation advocacy on behalf of the county of Monterey. Is Senator Caballero on?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we go to Senator Caballero now, she's limited on time, and thank you for the accommodation, so she can go first. But just so the public knows, this resolution idea came from the Legislative Committee to honor and appreciate Senator Caballero for her outstanding representation and advocacy on behalf of the county of Monterey. Senator Caballero has served with excellence and distinction as a California State Senator of the fourteenth district, which includes the county of Monterey, since first being elected in December twenty eighteen and again for a second term in twenty twenty-two. Senator Caballero's leadership representing the county of Monterey has been exemplary as she has demonstrated remarkable ability to build relationships with the board of supervisors and county residents, a genuine concern for the county's unique objectives and requests. Senator Caballero worked on the creation of the California Small Business COVID-19 Relief Program through the passage of SB eighty-seven, which provided over seventeen hundred awards totaling over twenty point six million to local businesses. In twenty twenty-three, she worked to secure twenty million for the county of Monterey for flood recovery efforts in Paharo following the devastating floods. In twenty twenty-three, through SB eight hundred, Senator Caballero played a pivotal role in partnering with the Monterey County and the City Marina to facilitate the expansion of Joby Aviation's manufacturing facility. This resolution also reads other legislation, and also the millions of awards she got for communities all across the Salinas Valley. But after six years as state senator representing the people of Monterey County and the state of California, her district fourteen has been redistricted, and therefore, the county of Monterey will not fall within her fourteenth district after the November twenty twenty-four elections. So that is why we are honoring her today, to thank her for her many years of service in the Senate, but even in Assembly and as mayor of Salinas. So therefore, be resolved, the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all our county and our residents, hereby recognize and thank California State Senator Ana Caballero for many years of outstanding public service, which has directly improved the lives of the people of Monterey County and the people of the state of California. So we wanted to read that, and then we wanted to open it up for any comments from our members. I know Supervisor Askew is missing, who's my colleague on the Legislative Committee, but we wanted to take a moment of time to reflect and to thank Senator Caballero for her outstanding representation for us all these years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams, I'll let you go first.
Thank you very much, it is an honor for me to be able to just make comments about Senator Caballero, who has been a real model for so many women in government. She was a person of many, many firsts, representing the city of Salinas so beautifully as mayor, and continuing on throughout her entire career. She has broken more glass ceilings than I can imagine, and yet she maintains the poise and the quick wit and the brilliance to all of the things that she approaches. So I'm very, very honored that we're able to present this important resolution to Ana, and I'm very thankful that I know her as I do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Senator Caballero, this is Supervisor Lopez, just want to say congratulations. As my colleague Mary Adams said, you've shattered so many ceilings, but before you were able to do that, you proved what you are capable of here at home in Monterey County and Salinas, as you helped so many farmworkers along with your husband Juan and so many others who we've seen rise in the ranks of the nonprofit world and judges. You have set a standard for what is possible when we set our hearts to do the right thing and when we follow through on those commitments by fighting for those who are unable to fight for themselves. We've watched you do that here at the local level and shatter the ceiling as the first female mayor in Salinas, and then go on to the state where you've continued that legacy and continued to fight not just for farmworkers, but for rural communities, folks that often feel unseen and unheard at those levels of our government. So in a deep appreciation for all your work, we stopped today to celebrate you and your accomplishments thus far, even though we know you're not done. You're going to continue that work at the Senate for the foreseeable future, so we appreciate you and your sacrifice on behalf of everybody here on the Central Coast where we lift you up today, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez, and I just want to follow up to that, this is a, you know, just a great opportunity, and we're all pleased to be able to give you this recognition for so many years of work. As you know, we first met back in the, forty years ago in the mid-eighties on political issues, and it was quite a team back then, you know, there's you and there was your husband Juan and Gary Karns and Lady Villarreal and Bill Manning, and kind of just see where everybody has gone over those years. I don't think we could have predicted any of that back then, but your path is particularly notable of many accomplishments. And as I've pointed out, Supervisor Adams, you broke a lot of glass ceilings and probably a few glass windows, too. It's always been a real pleasure to work with you, and I know you're leaving one path in life, but you're not somebody to just say, well, I'm retired, I'm gone, I'm done. I know we'll be seeing you about, and you'll be doing good work from there forth. So if you have any other words you'd like to say, please do, Ana.
Well, first, let me just thank you so much for this incredible recognition. My apologies for not being there in person, I would have if I could have. But a big thank you to the Ledge Committee, Supervisor Alejo. You've always been a great partner on behalf of Monterey County. And that makes it easy for me to be able to identify what the priorities are for the county and to try to help to meet them in the work that we do in the legislature, as you know. And so I'm very honored to receive this, it's a bittersweet moment to start my career in this area, and then to be redistricted out. But I know that I have a couple, two years left, and I'll continue to make you proud and to do everything I can to support the efforts of the new senator that will be arriving in December. And know that I have a deep love for the valley, I have a deep love for rural California, and I'm going to continue to advocate on behalf of rural communities. And you guys do excellent work, and without your partnership, I couldn't have done as much as I was able to do for Monterey County, so thank you very much, I'm very honored to receive this and moved by the recognition as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Senator Caballero, for the public. Senator Caballero is having her farewell reception and her last legislative update for Monterey County on Friday, November eighth, twenty twenty-four, from two to five PM at the National Steinbeck Center. So for folks interested in seeing her one last time, representing us, that event is being held for her. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I want to, again, really thank Senator Caballero for her leadership. One project I forgot to mention was, she and Assembly member Robert Rivas got five million dollars for the Salinas Soccer Complex. For any of us who drive by that soccer complex and sees thousands of people, families, grandparents every weekend, for me, that is one of the best things that we could accomplish, giving those opportunities to our family and our youth. So thank you again, Senator Caballero, for all your outstanding lifetime of service.
Thank you.
Thank you, I love that soccer field.
If we could give her a big round of applause, everybody, to Senator Caballero.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we'll move on to the other resolutions. Let's see, you have two to present today, correct? You have two and I have two, I'll do mine and we'll follow up with yours. See, I have two retirements here, why don't we go with Michael McFadden, Michael? And Jack, there you are. Let me give you this resolution here, say a few words here regarding to that, and then I'll pass it on. So Michael has been working for the county since the year two thousand and has held various positions until twenty ten, when he became Principal Assistant for the Military and Veterans Affairs Office. He served as Health and Safety Officer and assisted dependents of veterans to receive their educational benefits. Michael has also certified in English and Spanish language, which has brought expanded communication and inclusivity to both Department of Social Services and Military and Veteran Affairs Office clients and services. Michael served as a disaster service worker during the Big Sur fires as a COVID quarantine site in King City at the Paharo Flood Victims Shelter at Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds. He's a proud son and grandson of veterans and uncle of three active-duty nephews. We appreciate all your service and your time here, and it's a real pleasure for the board to give you this. Thank you, Jack, do you have something you want to say?
It's bittersweet for our office to have Michael join his wife in retirement, who also retired from the county. He is, for so many people who come in needing assistance, he's the first face they see. And the feedback about the quality of service and the commitment to helping others that our office gets on Michael's behalf is just overwhelming. Multiple times, he has been selected as the Department of Social Services Employee of the Year for customer service, I mean, he is really our face. We're very saddened to have him leave us and retire, but we're also super happy for him and his wife Patricia, as they continue to serve the community as leaders of a ministry in Marina. But I do also want to mention that prior to Michael coming to the Military and Veterans Affairs Office, he served the community through his work as an eligibility worker for Department of Social Services. He was in Office Assistant Two, Office Assistant Three in Community Benefits in Seaside. He has worked in IHSS, his entire career has been in the Department of Social Services, and that says so much about the fiber that Michael is made of and who he is as a person. So we're very, very, as I said, again, grateful for your service and your contributions to our office and the veterans that our office serves, but also we're so happy at the same time that, you know, you have this opportunity to spend some time with your wife Patricia and the community here in Marina. So thank you very much, on behalf of the twenty-three thousand veterans in Monterey and San Bernardino County, six thousand service members and their families, we really appreciate everything you have done, thank you.
Thank you to everybody, to the Board of Supervisors for this moment, for my supervisor Wendy Rudaskew in her absence, to my managers Jack Murphy and Adam Ehrehebby, to my colleagues that are here, to my lovely wife who stands by her man, and to the members of my faith community who came today to represent and support, thank you, and to God who makes all things possible. It's been my honor and privilege to serve Monterey County with some amazing, amazing people, some dedicated, professional, respectful colleagues, to be a part of a team that is doing everything they can to help our clients every day. It's been most especially my honor to serve the Military and Veterans Affairs Office, because I'm from a military family, and so I was born into it and I was raised into it. And even though I never put on a uniform myself, I could serve with empathy and compassion and respect, understanding from my own experience what it is to be part of a military family. And we'll still be in Monterey County, we'll still be here, but we will be focusing on each other and on our senior parents, our family, and on our faith community for this next chapter of our lives. Thank you to all of you, God bless you, thank you.
Do you have one more retirement here, and this is for Susan Romaldo? Hi, Susan. Present you this resolution. So Susan has dedicated thirty-eight years of her life to the Consumer Health Protection Services. Yeah, that deserves an applause, just that's how. She's contributed importantly to health and well-being of the community by ensuring the safety and health of our consumers. And Susan's been a leader in the childhood lead prevention program, has worked tirelessly to reduce lead exposure risks and raise awareness of lead poisoning prevention. She's played a pivotal role in establishment and ongoing success of the Food Safety Advisory Council, engaging with local businesses, restaurants, and community stakeholders to promote food safety services and practices. She has advanced recreational water safety, ensuring that the county's beaches, pools, and other recreational water bodies meet robust health and safety standards. She has also led the inspection and improvement of agricultural field toilets, contributing to protection of farmworkers and the surrounding environment. to protection of farm workers and the surrounding environment. And Susan has also worked consistently to promote the highest standards of efficiency, accuracy, and uniformity in public, in public, excuse me, health protection. And obviously, as over these 30 years, you've earned a lot of respect and admiration from your colleagues, community members, and also from the Board of Supervisors. And it's a real pleasure to recognize you for many, many years of service. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
I just want to say that 38 years goes by really quickly. And one of the reasons is when you're working with a group that's, one, highly educated, very professional, and they're working for the same cause as you, and that's for the health and the safety of the public. And we're all the public. So, I thank you all for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Board. Susan, I'd just like to say, this is our way of saying thank you. When I think of Susan Romaldo, I think of leadership, dedication, but most of all, I think of grace, grace that you have so much of, Susan. And thank you so much for protecting the public, for all the service, and being an example for all of us.
And I just want to say, Susan, thank you. I began my career here with Susan, and she's inspired me every day. And so, I'm 17 years going, and we'll see where it ends up.
Thank you.
Pass the baton. All right, everyone, we're going to continue this theme of honoring our veterans as Veterans Day is coming up on November 11. But we want to first bring up the resolution honoring Veterans Day. We want to call up Jack Murphy and all the staff of the Military and Veterans Affairs Office. We're going to be recognizing all our staff. It's not just about honoring our veterans, it's about serving them when they come out of active military or as they age, as we have a very significant veterans community here in our county. So, this resolution first recognizes November 11 as Veterans Day in the County of Monterey and honors the service and sacrifice of many veterans who have safeguarded our country and recognize the veterans organizations who in turn served those who served us. As we all know, Veterans Day first started, I think, in 1919 as Armistice Day to mark the end of World War I. And it was 1950s, it was then later changed to Veterans Day. But throughout our nation's history, brave men and women in uniform have answered the call of duty to defend and protect our freedoms. The County of Monterey is home to approximately 23,000 veterans who form a vital part of our communities and workforce. County residents have served in conflicts around the world, including World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, Afghanistan, Syria, to mention just a few. Veterans have often faced challenges in transition to civilian life, including a lack of adequate support from their community and recognition for their service. The County Military and Veterans Affairs Office provides advocacy, assistance, services designed to enhance the lives of Monterey County veterans and active-duty military personnel, their survivors, and families. This resolution reads a lot of the work that they do, but I'm only going to read one of those that says that during the fiscal year 2024, the Military and Veterans Affairs Office garnered $6,308,454 in retroactive disability payments and $13,418,99 in annualized recurring monthly compensation benefits. So, they are able to do very significant work with this very small team. So, therefore, the County of Monterey Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all our county and our residents, recognize November 11 as 2024 as Veterans Day in our county and honors the extraordinary contributions and services of our veterans, veterans organizations, and all our amazing county staff who serve, continue to serve every day with dedication and compassion, our veterans. So, with that, we have some, we're going to present this resolution first. This is the right one. Here we go to Jack Murphy. And we want to hear some words and then we'll present individual certificates afterwards. So, we give them all a round of applause, everybody, for the great work they do for our veterans and their families.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. I want to start off by addressing something that was brought up earlier at the beginning of the public comment. No one wants peace more than a veteran. No one wants peace more than a service member. Because we're the ones who have to go out and potentially pay that unlimited liability. And there are other veterans in this room. Ray, Navy veteran. Kurt, Air Force veteran. Eric, you're a Navy vet. Shane? Army, dang it. Okay, good. I am Army too. And then Shane, you are Air Force. I've got some veterans on the staff here. And there are other staff members from our office who weren't able to be here today because they're, of course, helping veterans and service members and families as well. But this means a tremendous amount. It's a fantastic community to work in. I wouldn't be doing this if we didn't have a vibrant, brilliant, lively veteran community to interact with. We love what we do. We love getting veterans and their families the benefits that they're entitled to because of their service. So, again, contrary to what might have been mentioned before, there are so many benefits for veterans out there, so many ways that our great staff and organizations in the community, like the Veterans Transition Center, can help those veterans. So, don't be misled by some of the commentary sometimes. If we didn't believe that our country was going to take care of us as service members, well, then we wouldn't have veterans in our nation to defend the freedoms that everyone is entitled to. So, again, thank you for the recognition. Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. Thank you to our CIO and other members of the board and staff. But I just wanted to kind of set that straight for me. Adam? Roll with it. Okay.
All right, we want to, this small and mighty team, though, does this amazing work. We talked about the benefits, but also education, getting veterans into the local community colleges or the universities, pursuing their education goals, and many other things that you do. But it's important, as a board, to, every now and then, to take a moment to also recognize and thank our team for the tremendous work that they do, serving so many of our veterans. So, I know the whole team's not here. We have a few missing, but we'll present those who are here. And first of all, we want to present this certificate resonating to Jack Murphy. Give him a round of applause. And then next, Adam Arahebi? Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Appreciate it, sir. Next, Jorge Rojas. There you go. Congratulations, sir. Thank you for your service. Next, Lupe Javier. All right. Thank you very much. All right. And last but not least, with their, Michael McFadden, the one and only retiring. Thank you, brother, for all you did, for all our veterans, all these so many years. So, with that, we want to take a photo. And again, thank you for all you do for the people and veterans of Monterey County. Thank you. We have one more. I'm going to invite Sonia De La Rosa to come join me for this, because this was her idea. And we're going to call up Kurt Shaki of the VTC, the Veterans Transition Center. Any other team members here? Okay, we got you only. Wait, you want to get here in the middle? Everyone, this resolution is in line with what we were just talking about earlier. This resolution is for Operation Green Light for veterans. This was first a campaign or a proposal by the National Association of Counties, and our wonderful CIO, Sonia De La Rosa, wanted us to incorporate that here in the County of Monterey as well. This Operation Green Light for veterans is designed to show support for our nation's veterans, raise awareness of our county's role in providing support and resources to veterans in our county. I'm not going to read the whole resolution, but it reads in part, "An estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Active military members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during the first year after military service. The National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And the county appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes a specific recognition should be granted." So, therefore, the County of Monterey declares November 1, 2024, through Veterans Day, November 11, 2024, as Operation Green Light for veterans, with designation as a green light for county veterans, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, also be resolved that Operation Green Light, the County, with the County of Monterey encourages its residents in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights at their place of business or residence or in a window of their place of business or residence between those dates, November 4 through 11. So, today, we want to present this resolution for our first-ever Operation Green Light for veterans to Kurt Shaki of the VTC. Thank you very much. And I'll pass the first mic to Sonia and then to you, Kurt.
Thank you so much. And I wanted to take the opportunity truly to thank, of course, all our veterans that are in our community, but also all of your spouses, all of your moms and dads, all of your family members who also return when you do and also adapt to make sure that you are welcomed home and feel the warmth of the community as they hug you. Now, why a green light? It is because it represents hope and renewal. And this year, we have selected three buildings that will be lit up and the flags will actually be uplit, and it's going to be our shilling site, our Veterans and Military Affairs Office location, and then also this building. And we are honored that so many of you choose to come back and work for the County of Monterey. But in addition to that, we also receive the gift of your families. And one of the things that I learned through our National Association is that we could do so much more. We could bring so many more of your family members to work here at the County of Monterey. Actually, in talking to Jack, I'm like, we need to do a better job of recruiting people, even if they're just here two years, because we receive that gift in our own office. We have one of our employees who's been here, and the whole time that she's been here, it's been extraordinary, the work that she's been able to do. But then, not only that, we have the opportunity to allow for remote work. So, we're going to keep her, even though her husband is being redeployed somewhere else. So, I just want to, again, thank all of you, those of you who have family members, those of you who are praying every day for their safety, and then also those of you that pray for those that have come back, because they still need us. And being out in the community, we know that a lot of times, we don't reach people in certain areas. We need to do a better job of doing that. But along with Jack Murphy, it is our pleasure to be able to serve our community and all of those families. So, with that, thank you so much for doing this, for this resolution. And again, this is only the first, many more to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate allowing VTC to represent the veteran-serving organizations. We have a very strong community with the Military and Veteran Affairs Office. We feel very supported by the county, the supervisors, with true, meaningful support. So, on behalf of veterans, particularly veterans in need, we're very grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we'll take a photo. Thank you very much. And to close, everyone, we don't have a Board of Supervisors meeting next week, but we do the week after that. And I want to invite everyone, in the tradition of honoring veterans today, we're going to honor some other community heroes, but it's going to be a very big honor to bring a World War II veteran to be honored. He was raised, he went to, raised here in Salinas, went to elementary school, middle school, high school, and was a, he's a decorated U.S. Merchant Marine veteran, John Lyon, will be here in two weeks, so that he could receive his John Lyon Day here in Monterey County, an award that he has never received from this Board of Supervisors, but we do want to recognize him, and we invite you to join us in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Just for the public to know, our next meeting is going to be actually November 12, for clarification. With that, we'll move on to appointments, and we have three appointments on here. Is there any public comment on these three appointments? The board?
Second.
First and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Appointments carry an 4-0 vote. Now, we'll move to the consent calendar. And I'll go out to the public first. We have items 29 through 53 on the consent calendar. Do we have anybody in the chambers that wants to discuss on these? And I don't see anybody. We have anybody online? Nobody online? Any close public comment on this? Anybody have any items they want to comment on or poll? I'm going to ask to poll items 31 and 33. And I'll begin discussion on those. These are the two on the, one of them is regarding the new contract or basically the agreement that we wouldn't be putting this out to open bid for the new, the waste hauling contract, and the other one is for the rates. And I just wanted to have a separate vote, even though I know both of these are setting for November 12, a hearing. I disagree with the board on item 31. I do feel that we should have put things out to bid. It was, I feel like it was the proper, transparent thing to do. But respect, I'm in the minority, and that's the way democracies work. So, that was my only comment, particularly on that one. On 33? These are on the, just consent items. On 33, I know we're setting some rates for next year, but if I could get clarifications from the Health Department, the new contract clearly hasn't been ratified correctly or hasn't been completed, or where are we at on that?
Director of Environmental Health, Supervisor, with regards to item 33, the rates you see before you are set and will be in effect if our negotiations go, do not go beyond, if they go beyond our date of, our expected date of December. Because the rates have to be set by June, but right now, we're, the negotiations are going great. So, we will move along to November. We'll provide updates. If everything goes well, then, then by December, then those rates with the new agreement would take effect.
These rates with, these rates we're voting on now have a 6% increase to take effect if all goes according to plans with negotiations. Is that what I'm understanding?
No.
It's the other way around.
The other way around.
Okay. I want to make sure I was clarifying that. Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
And, you know, in that case, I, you know, I will vote for 33, but so, we got to separate these apart from there. We want to put-
Do you want to have a separate vote on 33?
33 and 31, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I did want to go to public comment earlier. Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, except for items 31 and 33.
We actually can put 33 inside of that.
Oh, you're going to keep 33 in? Okay, just absent 31.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 4-0. Then we come back to item 31.
I'll make a motion to approve the item 31 of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
We'll go to a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries 3-1. With that, we'll go now to general public comment. You have two minutes.
I was given instructions that the interpreter will be interpreting via Zoom.
My name is Rosa Espinoza.
My name is Rosa Espinoza.
You can call me Chelena.
You can call me Chelena.
The reason that I'm here is two reasons.
I'm going to be brief and consistent. I'm going to be brief and consistent.
El primero es porque vine a hacer una compra.
The first one is because I came to do a purchase.
Les vine a comprar Salinas, California.
I came to buy Salinas, California.
Es lo que vale.
This is what it's worth.
Por qué razón?
For which reason?
Está devaluada.
Is devaluated.
Es un premio Nobel de literatura por John Steinbeck.
Here is a Nobel Prize of Literature by John Steinbach.
Y se los he mencionado anteriormente. No tengo por qué decir el año porque ustedes deben saberlo.
I have mentioned this previously. I don't have to tell you the year because you probably do know it.
Salinas es un bote de basura.
Salinas is a trash container.
California también.
As well as California.
Así como todos los estados que congregan el, los, el continente de Estados Unidos.
As well as all the states that belong to the United States continent.
Porque americanos somos todos.
Because Americans are all of us.
Es el continente americano.
Is the American continent.
Así que ustedes suelen, debemos de llamarles estadounidenses.
So we should all be called United States citizens.
Vengo a pedir una solicitud.
I'm here to request an application.
Que modifiquen la librería John Steinbeck.
To modify the John Steinbach Library.
Está llena de orines y de mierda.
Is full of urine and shit.
Incluso el techo entra el agua y están exponiendo a los empleados al cáncer y exposición de agua y fuego.
Furthermore, the ceiling is leaking water, exposing its workers to water contamination as well as fire.
Y que pongan una fuente, algo, no sé, algo hermoso.
And that you should place something beautiful like a fountain.
Para que les reduzca el estrés, porque el estrés los está matando, los está volviendo locos.
So that the stress can be reduced because the stress is driving them crazy.
Ayer se me encerró en el hospital natividad porque dijeron que ven, iba vestida inapropiadamente.
Yesterday I was locked up in Nativity Hospital because I was told that I was dressed not properly.
Es lo que van a hacer en este momento, llamar al 911 y encerrarme mentalmente, siguiéndome torturando después de ser una esclava sexual dentro de los Estados Unidos donde el agua que se me daba de tomar eran penes orinándome en mi boca, pero esa era mi agua.
Are they going to lock me up because in the past I was locked up because people were urinating on my face thinking it was water.
Me separaron de mis hijos argumentando que yo era una criminal 51/50.
They took, they separated from my children claiming that I was a 51/50 criminal.
Eso es lo, lo que venía a exponer el día de hoy.
This is the exposure that I wanted to put in front of you.
Quieres arrestarme, quieres matar, adelante, pueden hacerlo.
If you would like to arrest me, if you would like to kill me, go ahead and do it.
Thank you for your comments. The Salinas City, Salinas Library, Steinbach Library is actually operated by the City of Salinas. Do we have anybody else in the chambers?
Good morning. Name is Eric Peterson, and I hope you all got the correction that I was Army, not Navy. The Army is the service that the others are really there just to support. Anyway, there was a recent article in this publication called San Jose Spotlight, and it's an online thing that does better job than the Mercury News for San Jose issues. San Jose Selects First Homeless Sleeping Site. What they have done is identify an area where people can legally pitch their tents with security, with sanitation, and without, apparently without getting sweeps. And I'm a little bit familiar with the area because some friends of mine had a business in that area long ago. But if San Jose can do something like this, San Jose, the city where right now they are dueling with the elections and police at the same time, if San Jose can do something like this, we can do better. We can do a lot better. And I would urge the county to look into locations. It was just some vacant land and on Taylor Street, if you're familiar with San Jose, and it could make a lot of people safer and a lot, and feeling a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the chambers?
So, good morning, Supervisors. My name is Eloise Shim, and I'm speaking here for the Salinas Historic Resources Board. I'm a member. And I just want to let people know that on October 25th and October 26th, there's going to be a celeb, an open house for the Victorian Halloween, for the first mayor's house. And it's going to be safe activities for children, so people can bring their children. I'm sure there'll be some English literary focus and activities for them there. And also, the City of Salinas recently passed, purchased the Republic Cafe, and there's going to be a fundraiser on November 2nd. For $50, they're going to give you enough barbecue for four to five people. It's a good cause. It will be from 11 to 2 at the Buddhist temple. So that's a good cause. And also, I had an art initiative for the human, for the Historic Resources Board, and I saw on KSBW that they showed some people doing plein air art in Capitola. So I hope that the streets of Salinas will have a similar art initiative, because that was my intention. So, yeah, that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Good morning, Monterey County Supervisors. I'm Luis Chago Juárez, Neighborhood Organizer for Building Healthy Communities, and I am a resident of Salinas. I'm also an instructor, ethnic studies instructor. And, you know, just to bring some attention back to Supervisor Lejo for his efforts of championing for ethnic studies, has provided a space for critical, for a critical lens placed upon our histories here in the state, the county, nationwide. And it brings us, many times in these, in these lessons, we're always kind of coming back to the root causes of a lot of the issues that we are continuing to face today, that a lot of our, our families, our communities here, especially here in Salinas, have experienced, for example, the criminalization of, of youth, criminalization of children, of farmworker What we have seen and what we can draw from some data around investment, areas of investment, where that can be placed, produces, does produce results. Whereas when we're, when we're placing investment around policies that, well, that further, I guess we could say, like sustain, cultivate, punishment policies, policies that continue to target color, communities of color, policies that, policies that, that take our attention away from really recognizing the patterns, coming back to poverty. And being that we are part of the global food chain, you can't help but wonder. And, you know, in the conversations with our students, it all comes back to poverty and how poverty sustains this agricultural industry. Thank you.
You see nobody else in the chamber, so we'll go online. Do we?
We have four. Phone number ending 837.
Yes, 837. You have two minutes.
This is Brian Rosen again. I'm concerned about one community of color that's being exterminated right now, called the Palestinians. Our government's been hurting communities of color for a long time. Our great military, how many Indians did they exterminate back in the day? You don't seem to talk about that very much. One Indian did something to a white person and would kill a whole, wipe out a whole village. You know, I think the greatest criminals are the politicians, not the veterans. They're just, they don't know what they're doing. Veterans for Peace is against war, but you don't honor them. They know the insanity of the war. They know the insanity of the military industrial complex, which you all seem to support. And you all seem to support the police state. Well, I would say you do. But I wish you, then Martin Luther, you make, make, make Martin Luther King a hero because he was killed, but I'm sure you wouldn't like what he said, and you don't want to talk about it, because he said billions of dollars are being committed to do mass murder. So these heroes, but the, maybe there's a place in hell for politicians, they say. But you sure congratulate yourself. But I'll tell you how we can get a lot more people to vote. Right now, it's maybe 35% who have the politicians be graded on the, a lot of people will vote if they can grade the politicians, and they're not going to grade you as you grade yourself in your self-congratulatory dialogues. And you sure like each other a lot. You're a private club. The rest of us don't always fare so well. I wish you would do better for the people. I don't see it. Makes me very sad that we're just standing by and talking about women going through glass ceilings while these women who say this, like Supervisor Adams, don't seem to say anything about the Palestinian women and children who are being exterminated by, with the help of our government, which the government of Israel, which does not represent many, many Jews, most Jews, I believe, is doing all these horrible things with US assistance.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you for listening.
Phone number ending 902.
902, you have two minutes.
My name is Nina Beatty. Two things. October is Vaccine Injury Awareness Month, and there's information on Children's Health Defense website on the side effects, including galeinberg, anaphylaxis, and heart problems. Also, there's a federal injury fund for those who have had serious side effects. Primarily, I want to ask the county to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and an arms embargo to stop weapons to the government of Israel. There was an editorial in the Monterey Herald Saturday and last week in the New York Times, reports from doctors who are volunteering and nurses volunteering in Gaza and the horrors they have seen in Gaza. Every day, these health professionals are seeing Palestinian children shot in the head and the neck. They generally die. It looks like the Israeli government is assassinating these children. And then there, of course, the children, the women, the men, that are blown up or burned alive. In the editorial, it stated, they showed X-ray images in the New York Times of the upper body of different children, showing a bullet lodged in the head or the neck. And then another nurse said, many children come in without legs, without arms. I witnessed a father holding his children in two bags. She described the guilt she felt when compelled to leave a dying 10-year-old children in order to attend to others who had a chance of living. 90% of her body was burned. She asked me to stay beside her and hold her hand. I will never, ever forget her burned skin in my hands. I feel guilty because I did not stay beside her in the dip, in the bed. I feel guilty when she asked me about her mother and father and sister, brothers, and I didn't respond because the whole family had been killed during the bombing of her house. I sent you letters from doctors volunteering in Gaza sent to President Biden and the Canadian leaders. The US and taxpayers are sending the bombs, the weapons, logistical support, and money to the government and is, that is murdering these people. And that murdering, ethnic cleansing has gone on since 1947.
Thank you.
And now US soldiers have stopped the murdering.
Please, yes, thank you.
Israel, we are here today to express extreme concern with this board's formal resolution in support of Prop 36 with no community engagement opportunities, forums, town halls, or process. Looks like, Prop 47 has been successful but is now under basis attack threatening the future of California's focus on rehabilitation. Specifically, in our county, Prop 47 brought resources for the county Health Department, county Public Defender's Office, and community-based organizations, which led to strong and much-needed collaboration between the county and CBOs. It created jobs for people both in the county departments and CBOs. Most importantly, a lot of Monterey County community members have gotten their records expunged. These resources also led to the development of the substance abuse facility in King City, the sobering center in Salinas, behavioral health programs, and the city of seaside recreation services received over $6 million. Currently, Prop 36 is disguised with the promising name of the Drug and Theft Crime Penalties and Treatment Mandatory Felonies Initiative, would roll back the progress of Prop 47. This measure, who is backed by major retailers such as Walmart, Target, and Home Depot, as well as district terms and law enforcement, would reclassify certain drug offenses and increase penalties for those, for those who use drugs. More importantly, it would increase prison populations and slash funding to the Critical Prop 47 Grant Program. Most counties don't have nearly enough behavioral health treatment facilities, services, or workforce to accomplish these measures, what this measure aims to achieve. California and Monterey County do not have enough treatment bases for the existing demand currently. Researchers found that substance use disorder treatment facilities in partic, in particular do not accept patients with prior involvement in criminal justice system. Governor Newsom tried to keep Prop 37, Prop 36 off of the ballot and, for a time, considered putting competing crime measures before voters. He hasn't put any money into fighting Prop 36, but he referred to the initiative as an unfunded mandate that would take California back to the war on drugs. Can you please share how this proposition will help our community or community members? And since you are in support, what is the implementation plan for Monterey County? Specifically, where will these people get treatment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Phone number ending 705.
705, you have two minutes.
Yes, good morning, Supervisors. The extermination of the Palestinian people by the, by Israel is unacceptable. It's Nazi Germany all over again, and no amount of posturing to the American public that our bombs will cease can quell the terrible ache in our hearts for what our government is doing. How can any of us allow the genocide that is going on all over the world to continue? And yet it does, and we taxpayers are paying for it, and we stand helpless, which ruins our own lives and our own happiness. So please, you as a body of government can tell Congress and Panetta to insist the bombs to Israel cease now. Give them the support to say no to his party, and you can do that as a body of government in a resolution now. And every day that you wait, you are allowing more children to be shot in the head. Secondly, wind farming on our oceans is coming if we don't stop it. The proposal for hundreds of these Eiffel Tower generators, promising to electrify millions of homes, does not address the noise vibration these generators cause, nor do we have any data on the effects of ocean life. Farmers are now lamenting their decision to allow wind generations on their, on their land. They say the constant noise and vibrations are driving them crazy. It's ruined their lives. Please educate yourselves into looking into this nightmare, because you will have to vote on it sooner than you think. Conservation and mass transit is the only answer to our energy needs. Thank you, and solar, of course. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
No more.
No more, okay. With that, we will close the general public comment, and we'll recess. Yes?
Mr. Chair, just, I want to put for the record, correct one of the comments. When we took a position on Prop 36, we had a hearing, posted on the agenda, 72 hour in advance in the legislative committee, and we had a full discussion of this Board of Supervisors. So I didn't want the public, I just wanted to correct that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you for that, too. We'll recess and call to order the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair, let the record reflect. All Supervisors are present in the board chambers today, except for Supervisor Askew, that is absent today.
Are there any additions or corrections?
No additions or corrections.
Any general public comments on the Water Resources Agency? I see, see none. We have one item on the consent calendar, and see no public comment on there. We got a first?
Second.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries four zero. Now would we adjourn the board of supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency and reconvene the board of supervisors? Uh, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair, let the record reflect. All supervisors are present in the board chambers today, except for Supervisor Askew that is absent today.
We have item twenty-five here before us, which is to approve and authorize, um, contracts and purchasing agreement for a concession lease agreement at Shilling Place. Chill morning.
It was still morning? Okay, good morning. Um, to Chair, Supervisor Church, all of the board, to County Council Blitch, and also to our County Administrative Officer, Delarosa. I'm Deborah Wilson. I am the Contracts and Purchasing Officer for the County of Monterey. And with me, I have some of my staff. I have Susanna Maseas is going to drive for us this morning, and I have, uh, Anhela Correales, who's going to be here in support, and also Jessica Mesqua, who is one of the newest management analysts in my office. And so we're excited to present and to also welcome the new concessionaire for the County of Monterey Shilling Place Cafe. This has been an arduous process. As you know, this cafe has been closed now for about a couple of years. Um, and issue is that we were trying to find an individual that could come in. It's a massive project to handle that cafeteria at fourteen forty-one. And so we have gone out to bid several times, and, um, in my office, Gina Encalado has done a really good job as, um, going out to bid for this, um, cafe. As you know, we opened up one sixty-two West Dallas Al right down the way here, Joe's Cafe, and Gina was an integral part of that, and also, um, I, I believe that Sonia Delarosa was also there, and Supervisor Alejo, and we had a ribbon cutting, and that went very well. But it was a massive project to try to open up the Shilling Place Cafe. So we went out to bid. We actually had four viable bids, but we chose and awarded the Alvarez Brothers and Sons. And they're here with us today, and we're excited about that. We'll introduce them a little bit later. Uh, but I wanted to talk a little bit about, um, this agreement at the fourteen forty-one Shilling Place and the collaborative work that it's taken. Contracts and purchasing, of course, myself, again Gina Encalado, Tom Skinner, and then Jessica Mesqua. We also collaborated in partnership with George Salceda, the real property specialist for the County of Monterey, to help negotiate and to establish the lease agreement, and then also working with our County Council, Shane Strong. And also, I want to mention, you can go on to the next one, I'm sorry, I'm just talking. Um, the county collaboration, I want to, to, this has been, um, I would say it took a village to do this. So at the leadership helm, it was Ezekiel Vega and Randall Ishi that had the leadership portion of this and allowed for us to partner with Public Works Facility and Parks, myself, Tom Skinner, and then also with Jose Gonzalez, who's been, who has been an integral part in ensuring that we have the equipment and the maintenance so that we could open up this cafe. We are also going to establish, not just reopen it, but create some nuances so that the whole county can benefit. And, um, so we're opening it up so that it can be a multipurpose use for the countywide, so that departments at no charge can also use the facility for certain projects or for certain, um, uh, special events. And so the Information Technology Department, working with Sarah House, um, and Ethan McGee are going to be looking at the A, a new AV system, somewhat like we almost have in here, so that we're able to, you know, make it again multipurpose. Uh, now that our consent calendar has been approved, we're going to now have new water heaters that are going to be going from water, from gas to electric, dealing, uh, and Cora has been an integral part of making that happen for us as well. Onto the next slide. So we have a running budget of forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty, but that is not just for fourteen forty-one. Contracts and purchasing manages the cafe at one sixty-two, which is Joe's, the cafe at fourteen forty-one Shilling Place, and also the daycare, the county daycare. So that discretionary fund is used for all three of those leases. But in just twenty twenty-four, to prepare for the opening of fourteen forty-one, we've spent, as you see, eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty, um, just looking at the refrigeration and making sure that the repairs were done. And then this fiscal year, we've only spent seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. I wanted to say that, uh, in addition, the philosophy behind the negotiations was stated also in the finance section of our board report, and I'll just repeat it, is that contracts and purchasing in partnership with, uh, the real property specialist and the Assistant Auditor Controller, and I would say also with the oversight of County Council, along with the concessionaire will partner, and we will perform an annual accounting review of the leasing relationship and adjust the commission fee to foster the fiscal sustainability, of course, the success of the concessionaire, and the county's fiscal responsibility to obtain fair and return on its real estate assets. So we really, um, intend on an annual basis to adjust the commission on an annual basis to come as close to commercial rates when we see the opportunity. And the other, um, element to a successful concessionaire and a, and a successful agreement for both of the cafes is management and oversight. And in times past, what we didn't have was a dedicated individual to ensure that that happened, and now we do. And I am excited to welcome and to present Jessica Mesqua, and, um, along with the other myriad of things and tasks and assignments that she has, one of them is going to be to manage the logistics of these two cafes. So I'm going to introduce Jessica, and then she's going to introduce our new partners and lease agreement, um, with the Alvarez Brothers.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm excited to present this exciting, um, initiative that we've been partnering with multiple departments in the county. Um, as Deborah mentioned, um, I will be managing the logistics, um, of the lease, um, as well as addressing any, um, equipment maintenance issues that arise, and managing our, um, multipurpose program. Um, so our county cafe management program will be comprised of three, um, parts. It'll be Joe's Cafe, Shilling Place Cafe, and our multipurpose reservation program, which, um, as Deborah mentioned, will be available to county departments to reserve for special events. And, um, if they wish to, also, um, use our vendor, who will be Alvarez Brothers and Sons LLC. And this is the seating areas that will be available to reserve. We will have a large seating area. We're working with IT to, um, revamp our AV system within. Uh, we have a small seating area that can book both and, as well as our outdoor seating areas, which can seat up to a total of like five hundred and seventeen people altogether. And now I will, um, invite over Sal Alvarez, who is, uh, the owner of the LLC, his partner Luis, uh, Louis Diaz Infante, and, um, his, their secretary Brittany should be on, online And I'll let them, uh, tell you a little more about their community engagement and projects.
I just want to say, uh, good morning. I'm Sal Alvarez and Luis Vianfrante is my partner. And I want to thank Deborah and Tom and Jessica for all the hard work that went into get this started. We've been working on this for maybe around, maybe two to three months. So Luis will let you know what's going to be happening.
Well, we're excited about this project, you know, or this, the opening of this cafe. We want it to be inclusive of other needs in the community. We want to offer also unique, um, offerings, you know, menu that can be, you know, uh, regional, traditions from throughout Latin America, just something exciting, could be on a weekly or a monthly basis. But, you know, well, so everybody knows about Taco Tuesday, you know? Everybody looks forward to that. But we want to include like Sushi Wednesday, tri-tip Friday, and then we'll have, uh, elote Monday, that'll be the Mexican street corn, and maybe pozole Thursday, because, uh, Deborah said we gotta have pozole, you know? It's gotta be on the menu. So we gotta make it exciting. We have to comply with that. Uh, we also want to offer vegetarian, vegan, plant-based, and also indigenous, Mesoamerican plant-based cuisine. We're also collaborating in discussions with Rancho Cielo, see if they, uh, see how we can partner up, uh, maybe expand their program, the culinary program into our kitchen. Uh, we're also in discussions with Meals on Wheels. Also, we spoke with, uh, Lorraine Gonzalez yesterday with the Build This Cafe, offer an opportunity for some of the folks that, within that program, to work at our cafe. You know, these are people that have disabilities and other challenges, so just an opportunity for them to work there. We're also, um, discussion with Atuera, uh, to provide personalized, uh, nutrition, prepared meals. Also in discussion with Go Kids out of Gilroy, uh, they also have, they, they have families here in Monterey County that, uh, they provide childcare services, and they have a food program. So they're excited about working with us. Uh, I met last Friday with Blue Zones, and we're looking to establish a, a Blue Zones menu. We also want to support our local vendors. You know, would you see some of these vendors at the farmer's market? Maybe we showcase some of their products there, have a little, like little, uh, tiendita, you know, where they can, uh, have the honey and other products, you know, not only on Saturday, but maybe have it available at our cafe. Uh, we want to offer HMRs, home meal replacements, where the employees can, um, order their meals ready to go at the end of the day, they pick them up, and they can take the, a family pack home, and they'd be able to, um, have something where it's, it's healthy and nutritious, but also it's quick and convenient for them, not having to go to, uh, a Costco or Safeway or something like that, they just pick it up on the way in, on the way, um, out. We also want to have organic and regenerative organic produce, uh, in our meals and, you know, dishes we're preparing. Uh, regenerative organic is more nutrient-dense, um, product, so it's something that's really, uh, becoming a fad now, not only fad, but it says, uh, something of a fact. So we want to offer that. Also prepared meal, uh, foods for emergency response situations. Sometimes when, you know, like the floods in, in Pajaro, you know, there's a need for food, that we have, um, that, the capability there to offer that. And primary is, um, we want to offer something delicious to the employees there at Shilling Place, that, uh, there's over four hundred employees there. They've petitioned to have a vendor go in, so we're, we're fortunate to be the ones to be selected, and we look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. So they have a lot of community engagement initiatives, and that makes it really exciting. Do you guys at this moment have any, um, questions for our vendor? Supervisor Adam?
Hi, I just have one question, um, because you were talking about making the space available to, uh, different departments, et cetera. Since you already have relationships with Rancho Cielo and Meals on Wheels, I'm wondering if there's an interest from the nonprofit community, if you would be interested in allowing other nonprofit organizations to make use of that space as well on an, you know, on an appropriate way of doing it. But I know that there are so many nonprofits who need to find a place to have, you know, their annual meeting as an example, and it would be lovely to have another, uh, potential venue in the, uh, in the mix. And thank you very much. This is really exciting.
Yeah, so I can answer that for you, supervisor. So we are going to manage the, um, requests, use, facility use request forms internally. So of course, we will, um, obviously the primary, um, you know, availability will be internally for our departments, but yeah, we want to allow, um, outs, outside, um, organizations to come and reserve as well.
And Shane's gonna speak to that. Yep. Now we get the hard part.
The hard part. Uh, hello, board. So, uh, something that, uh, happened during the state of negotiations was, what is the lease footprint going to be? And ultimately, it was determined that the lease footprint for the lessees, for the concierge service is going to be the kitchen side. The county is going to actually maintain everything outside the seating area, and, uh, so they aren't leasing that part of it, but they kind of have a right of first refusal. So if, if they want to use that space, they'll come to the county, uh, department, the CMP, they'll be able to get it. And you're talking about collaboration, I think that's a fantastic idea, and I can let the, the department talk about it, but really, I think underneath your question is, who has the reins on, on allowing that? It's going to be CMP moving forward, but with collaboration. Hope I answered your question.
If you did, thank you very much. Thanks all of you very much.
Any other questions?
I, my, my only question is just to, uh, isn't with the, um, particularly with the vendors. I mean, I'm really glad to see this is, is, is going ahead, it's been unused space. I've looked at it, and I've wondered, well, why is that? And I understand COVID had a big role into that. Uh, so I, I think it's a, you know, it's a great opportunity. I'm enthusiastic to see this, uh, coming about. I, and I know there's some unusual things with the lease, such as the seating area and everything, but this, also a couple of other odd things with it, the six hundred and seventy dollars a month, and the twenty percent from the gross, which is sort of unusual for a, um, a leasing arrangement. And is there a reason this was chosen over a set rental lease fee, monthly fee?
I'm not sure if George Salceda was on the line, our real property specialist. He did the negotiations in that, from that perspective, but I believe that that's why we're going to be doing the annual fiscal annual review to look at that, but the...
That's just for the, um...
That's just for the concession part?
Yes.
Um, but the, the lease of the, of the, um, facility has, has been around that. We've raised it a little bit, it's always been around that price. Um, it's the same price that we charge Joe's Cafe, and, uh, it's something that we'll look on an annual basis, but in order for somebody to come in, that's why we have a soft opening. We want to see, uh, the business, and that's why I'm, I'm grateful that they have a vision for it, and that's why they were chosen as a vendor. They were the only proposal that, that had a vision for community partnership, right? Because we want to make sure that it's soluble for them, too. You know, it has to be something that makes sense for them as well. And so this is something that we'll be looking at on an annual basis, but we want to ensure that they can make money, you know? Because it's been closed for quite some time, and so we have four hundred employees, but it's also open to the community. So we're hoping that Taylor Farms and the others associated around will also come in. And so we wanted to, you know, start off with something that, that, that made sense for them to be able to at least come in and to, um, start the business, like I said, in a soft, in a soft opening, and then as we get going, see what the, uh, community involvement, see what the revenue is coming in, and then we can readdress it at that time and reassess it at that time.
It, it's for the, for extending to an eight-year contract, though, at that rate, plus the, the annual potential raise?
And I, and I, yes, and I believe that George also put in there a stipulation of being able to look at it on an annual basis.
On the entire?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
I appreciate that, then, so I understand definitely to encourage somebody coming in.
Yeah.
Thank you for the answering that.
You're welcome.
Another thing, uh, really in reality, uh, the other business people that have been there have never really made anything out of it with, that's my part with Luis. Together, we kind of figured out if we could produce, uh, food there, work with several different groups, and maybe we could make this work and provide good service to the employees who work there. That was our main goal first, to, for the employees that worked there. Prepare some good, uh, good lunch or, or breakfast, so.
I would say I'm really enthusiastic with it, I was just needing a little clarification on there, so thank you for that.
I understand. Are there any other questions? Well, we look forward to the ribbon cutting. We look forward to you all being there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Bring back the board. Well, first I'll go after the public, is there any public comment on this matter? See no public comment. We'll close public comment. Back to the board, questions or motions or...
Just a motion to approve.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries three zero. Thank you. Move on to other board matters. We have no new referrals, but we do have county administrative officer comments.
Very brief today, I just want to, uh, we will, actually, my staff is going over to Orange County this week for the County Association of Executives Meeting, so we'll be learning from our partnering counties and, uh, sharing some of the great work that we do, um, in this county as well. Um, in addition to that, it's rare that we're here on October twenty-second, which is, um, the Angeliversary for my mom, and I just want to take a moment to recognize women, farmworking women that are currently in the fields, and also those have, that have retired. My mom worked in this county for about thirty-seven years in the fields, and she raised five of us, and each of us is doing very well, and, and there's no mystery that has to do with my mom. So I just want to take that moment to recognize all of our farmworking families and many of us that are here due to their, um, sacrifices. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll, um, turn to board comments. We only have three fifths of board at the moment, so the, uh...
I'll go ahead and start.
Comments will be shorter than normal.
Thank you. Um, I... I do want to just congratulate your hope and heart to the way that you honor your mother. It was really very lovely. Thank you for that. Also just to have a couple of quick things. One, I'm going to be presenting, or having a meeting on October 24th in Carmel Valley, at the Carmel Valley Youth Center in the Village, where we are going to present the different options that we have for the roundabout at the corner of Carmel Valley Road and the Lorelais Grade. This is going to be led by the Public Works Facilities and Parks Division. And I know it's certainly going to be something that our community has been looking forward to. So again, that's going to be on the 24th. Secondly, I wanted to say that there is a wonderful footrace in Big Sur this weekend, the Big Sur River Run. It is a benefit for the Big Sur Fire and the Big Sur Health Clinic. It is a fabulous event. I've done it myself. It's a five mile, 5K walk or run, whichever you want, a 10K as well. And it's just a super way to support the community and a beautiful trail right through Pfeiffer Park. And it's flat, which is my favorite thing. And then finally, I want to say that I had the great honor of attending the California LAFCO Conference this past week with my colleague Wendy Rudaskew and a number of people from the LAFCO staff, led by our amazing Kate McKenna, the general manager of Monterey County LAFCO. And it was really a treat because Monterey County LAFCO, their team won a very prestigious award called the Mike Gotch Excellence in Public Service Agriculture Protection. And it was a big deal. And Kate McKenna was able to just masterfully work to get this passed through her rather difficult commissioners from time to time. But it turned into such a wonderful project that, that we were honored by receiving this national award. So that was really terrific. And I hope you'll provide me just with one more, just small thing that I wanted to say. And it was when Mark Rosen was talking about, you know, we should be honoring military people who are for peace and that there is no one like that that's doing it. Well, I just wanted to refute that comment a little bit. Because in our county, in my mind, this person is the most significant constituent that I have. And his name is Phil Butler. And he was a commander in the, in the Navy during the Vietnam War and was the eighth longest held prisoner of war in North Vietnam. He also is credited with four other people with whom he was captured with coming up what was called the TAP code, which was a code that he had learned in survival training in the military to be able to communicate. And that kept so many military people alive by the ability to be able to communicate while they weren't held in as they were. We've given Phil several awards. It doesn't matter how many awards you come up with. There is nothing that could thank Phil Butler for the suffering and sacrifice that he made to ensure that our country can continue in the way that it does. So he was president of Veterans for Peace for many years. And he views that as one of his most significant accomplishments. So at this time, I just wanted to take an opportunity to just tell people about the wonderful person that we have in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just, looking backwards on this weekend, want to congratulate the community of Greenfield who pulled off an incredible harvest festival. It was a really well-attended event. It was two days this year. They closed down ECR Alcamino Real and had a really wonderful event with tons of different service providers out, including elections. They had this incredible mobile booth where you could vote day of. You could walk up, tell them your name and, and get your ballot printed out and walk into this mobile unit and vote in privacy, which was very cool to see. So I want to thank the entire team for being out there and use that as an opportunity to remind folks to vote. But getting back to the harvest festival, it was an amazing event with, I saw thousands of people out at one time. So knowing that it rolled through the rest of two days, it was great to be amongst the community and celebrating this year's harvest. Looking forward this week, want to share that tomorrow night, we'll be hosting a listening session in Gonzales. That will be at 5:30 at City Hall. So invite folks out to join us for that event. An opportunity to give us a little input on how we're doing and things you want to see. And then I will share that on Thursday, we'll be co-hosting a meeting with Tamse at Trular Elementary School. It's an opportunity to talk about the now released proposals for traffic changes on 101 between Salinas and Trular, trying to make improvements and save lives. So just wanted to call out those two opportunities that are going to happen during this week. Knowing we're not back for a while, I also want to share that on the 26th, McCarlem, the Monterey County Ag and Rural Life Museum, who calls San Lorenzo Park, County Park, Home, will be hosting a haunted hayride. They've brought in a theater company who's going to reenact some incredible local legends, stories, and perhaps a little witchcraft. We'll see. I hear there's a headless horseman who will make an appearance. But yeah, just, it's going to be a fun evening for families. It's free and it is from 6 to 8 p.m. this Saturday, again in San Lorenzo Park. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I have a few remarks too. I had a little excitement outside my house on Friday in the evening. My son had mentioned to me, there's a fire across the street. And fortunately, it was a north county fire. I want to give them many kudos. They got out there very quickly, put it out. It was mainly, it turned into a grass fire. Although what had happened is that an Amazon truck had come down from a driveway. It was dark, had gone off the road and buried the truck into the, into the, into the sand. And the hot muffler was touching the grass that was there. And as my father used to always tell me, don't park a vehicle that you've been driving with a hot muffler over grass. So it started a fire. The Amazon truck was completely engulfed. So there's one less Amazon truck out there, although I don't think they'll miss it. And the, it was under an oak tree, which got some scarred, a little bit of burning, but did not catch. The grass around there did. Fortunately, it was an oak tree and not a eucalyptus. And so that, everything turned out well, no damage to, to speak of, except for to the Amazon truck. And I believe there are only two packages lost as the driver was on his last, last route through there. Also went on Sunday to the Rancho Cielo Jazz at the Ranch with Los Lobos was there. It was a nice event, but maybe I'm getting old because they sounded real loud. Beautiful evening though and great food. And coming up this Thursday, we're having our Aromas Town Hall at the Aromas Grange between 5:30 and 7:00. It is a tri-county sort of town hall. We have Colin Kismicki, Supervisor, from, from San Bernardino County, as well as Felipe Hernandez from San Bernardino County there as well, similar as he did last year. And with that, that closes my comments off. And we have any readout from closed session?
There's no reportable action from closed session.
And we shall adjourn then and return on November 12th. Happy Halloween.